Good evening, everybody. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we just came out of non-public. Jim, everyone's going to stay non-public?
Chair, I would move that we seal the minutes to the non-public session until such time as the majority of this board finds it is wise and prudent to unseal them, with the exception of two human resources items.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the following announcements, and that is that firefighter Joel O'Valley was removed from probation and was raised to grade 12, step nine. Robert Hughes was also removed from probation and moved to step 12, sorry, grade 12, step 10.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to the Selectments Non-Public Minutes.
I would move that to approve the minutes of the Selectments Non-Public and Public Meeting dated May 1st, 2018.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would also move to approve the Selectments Non-Public and Public Meeting minutes from the meeting dated May 7th, 2018.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move down to scheduled business. We'll go to B, Transfer Station Review Safety Form.
The document that is on our computers is appropriate for what it needs to do. It just has to do with the, if they have to move those stairs, somebody will look and make sure they're being done properly.
So this was with the input of Building Department and the Joint Loss Prevention?
Yes.
Correct.
They've all approved and signed off on this?
Yep. And who is it expected to be inspected by?
The stairs?
The transfer station personnel, because they're the ones that will be moving them and probably, you know, the ones to inspect to make sure they're safe.
I would move to adopt this checklist as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to C.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that per RSA 91:95-B to accept and expend the unanticipated funds in the amount of $80 from the Newton Historical Society to the Newton Food Pantry.
Second.
Discussion? The only question I have is, it says on here per RSA 31, is that a typo?
Excuse me?
You said 95.
Sorry, I said 80.
31:95.
Yeah, it's RSA 31:95.
I thought I heard you say 31, I thought I heard you say 95, 95. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, D, Comcast Franchise Fee.
This is your standard letter where we got in the franchise fee and 0.5 percent goes to the cable and the rest goes to the town.
I would move to sign the letter to the bookkeeper regarding the cable revolving fund.
Second. Discussion?
Just one. Of late, we've been having some problems with the cable. Do we need to use any of the?
They have a...
Substantial, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
No, we're good.
Any other, not doing discussion tonight. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, E, Personnel Policy Review. My computer's still trying to open up the last one up there.
Yeah, mine keeps spinning.
Really? The only change that is being proposed here has to do with Saturday holidays. And that's because a Saturday holiday typically would be observed on a Friday, but then we have the Monday through Thursday employees, you know, full-time employees or even part-time, that it becomes an issue. Do you observe it on Thursday, which is what it was saying we do? But that's not realistic, plus it's our only night, so...
Real quick, which page?
Um, that...
Page five, thank you.
So, down at the bottom of page five, the proposal from the Policy Committee is that we change it so that we keep the, Saturday holidays will be observed on the preceding Friday, but now employees with a Monday through Thursday work week shall be granted a floating holiday to be used on or after the scheduled holiday until the end of the calendar year.
Could I make a friendly amendment to this?
What's that? Well, nobody's made a motion yet, I'm just explaining it.
I would move that...
I'd like to add...
Policy change.
I'll second.
Okay. Why, I would like to put Friday and Saturday holidays, because the holiday lands on Friday, what do we do? We don't give them Thursday off.
Weekday holidays, when employee is not normally scheduled to work on a particular weekday or on which the holiday falls, another workday shall be substituted for that holiday.
Because some people do work Friday.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
That's for both full-time and part-time employees.
Correct.
The only other thing I would add is, have we thought about how this affects the Police Department?
It would be the same thing. Saturday holidays are observed on the preceding Friday.
Okay.
Even if they work on Saturday, the holiday is observed on a Fri... Oh, no. Yeah, exactly.
So the police chief has read this and given his input?
He has not.
Exactly.
Neither has the fighter chief.
So...
And the road crew.
Or the road crew.
Yeah, so this goes back to what I was saying a few weeks ago, is we really need to have some sense of the, the key stakeholders have read, understand, and given us feedback before we vote on it, because if you were to tell me affirmatively right now, that I always call them the big three, police, fire, and highway, have read this and are fine with it, then I'll vote yes, otherwise I can't.
The only thing that we're changing is that we're affecting people with the Monday through Thursday work week.
Right. I actually, by reading this, my feeling is that they won't have an issue with it. I just want to make sure that that's true, because I'm not, I don't work in their department. We could be signing up for something that creates headaches for them.
They may have a reason why it wouldn't work for them.
Yeah.
I'd like to hold off on voting on it until...
You know, they might want to add number four, for the Police Department, et cetera, et cetera, you know.
Okay, so...
I'm good, otherwise, as long as they come in.
Policy Committee will submit this section of the holiday leave, the whole section, to all department heads and see if there's any feedback or any concerns with any of what we have. And then we will get back to the Board with what we get.
Otherwise, the Board's voting on it at the next, whenever that is.
Right. Yep, so I can do that.
Would you like to rescind your motion, Jim?
I will.
I'd like to rescind my second.
Okay.
Are we basically with the residential sticker policy, would that be the same deal?
No.
No?
The residential sticker policy, we discovered had a sentence.
What page?
This would be page three, I believe.
Page three, item four. The idea behind this was to allow those residents who do not have vehicles or may not even be able to drive, to be able to get a residence sticker that they can keep in their house. And as visitors come who are willing to take their trash to the dump for them, they do not have to, the mirror tag or the temporary permit would be issued to the physical residents, not to a specific vehicle. So that should, you know, Grammy Smith have her nephew come up one Saturday and go, you know, I've got a bag of trash there, could you please take it to the dump? She can hand that person the temporary permit, and they can go to the dump. Three weeks later, when she has another bag of trash, and her son comes, she can look at him and go, we take that to the dump. As we're finding more and more people in town whose relatives are not necessarily...
Do they have to keep coming to get a sticker, or that vehicle will have the mirror tag?
Well, they wouldn't be able to get a sticker, because the son, or the nephew, or the grandson, or whoever, aren't town residents. So in this way, each one doesn't have to come to Town Hall during our limited hours to get a tag for potentially a one-time trip.
It would have the mirror one.
So, exactly.
The resident would have it.
The resident would have the mirror tag, because they're entitled to drop their trash off at the transfer station. Now, if they don't drive because they had DUI, or they don't have a license, or they're elderly and they can't lift their, whatever the case may be, maybe they have a temporary vehicle, because they were in an accident, they got another vehicle. For whatever reason, they should be able to get a tag that is associated with the address, not the person.
Is this for household trash only? Is this for household trash only?
Household trash recycling, the, it's a permit to use the transfer station, just like any other resident.
I know, but my only thought is, somebody, their nephew's coming up from Haverhill, oh, good, I got all this crap I gotta throw, get rid of, throws in his truck, goes, picks up grandma's trash, and now he takes all his stuff and her stuff to the transfer station.
But what stuff? Household trash?
Well, they can throw stuff in at a cheaper rate, they can throw the metal in, they can have complete use as a Newton resident, even though they live in Haverhill, and they're going to pick up grandma's trash, they load their truck up with their stuff also.
The fact of the matter is, though, they could do that anyway.
Which is our logic behind not having that sort of, by allowing this?
Right.
Because even I can take my husband's truck that has a sticker on it, go to my sister's house in Sandown, who's doing some work, you know, taking down her old swing set, pick up the metal from there, and bring it over here, and dump it in our, I don't do it, but I could.
It sounds like a very specific...
Yeah, I know. Like it's been all planned out.
Except my sister doesn't live in Sandown.
Okay, good.
But that's the example that I can give. I can have a physical sticker attached to my vehicle and go pick up a relative or a friend's household, or metal, or recycles, or brush, or whatever, in Haverhill or Methuen or Connecticut.
Absolutely.
And bring it to the transfer station with no questions asked, because I have the sticker on my vehicle.
Right.
I think this is not a perfect solution, but it's as close as we could probably get, because it's hard to police every vehicle. I think, as many people know, Bob and I occasionally hang out at the dump together. And we were there, and we saw the, remember the U-Haul truck that came?
Yeah.
And had a bunch of stuff in it?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we kind of sat there and we kind of laughed, you know, we didn't know what was coming in there. But they stopped at the shack and they showed all their proper, they had all the right stuff they needed to, so they were let in, because you really, you really can't, he inspected the load, but you can't go in there and inspect the load and say, oh my God, that's coming out of Haverhill, I can tell that trash.
Right, there's no way to tell.
There's no perfect solution, but I'm okay with it.
Right. Remember, and I can think of maybe a dozen people in town who, their senior years, that...
This will help.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I, can I get clarification how Diane and I are supposed to handle this? Should there be something in there that says per request? I mean, I don't know all the people in town who might need this type of a permit, so for us, I mean, we're obviously not going to mail it out to everybody in town unless they request it, correct?
Well, it also says up in top, requests in writing, well, requests in writing may be made to have a temporary tag mailed to their temporary address, that was added. I mean, I don't, and that's for seasonals.
We, and I just want to be clear, so we know that a certain person lives at a certain address.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean that anybody in that household can use it, specifically for the elderly person?
No, no, because it goes to the property.
Okay.
So that mirror tag would have the property address on there?
Proof of residence, obviously, is clear if they own the house. What if they're renting?
Right, well, if they're renting, then they have to, just like when they register a vehicle, they have to have a copy of a lease agreement or rental agreement.
Yeah, they still need proof of residency and all of that before...
We just want to make sure we're not...
Because number four says residents using another person's vehicle, which this would qualify under, may be issued a temporary permit, and residents will need to provide proof of residence. That, this permit will be issued to the resident's physical address, not to a specific vehicle. That's what we're doing with number four. So because they need to provide proof of residence, they're going to come in to show you that.
So it could be anybody in the house that could take this permit?
Correct. In fact, it doesn't, it doesn't...
Doesn't have to be the owner.
No, 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 and it doesn't have to be anyone in the house.
If anybody in the country she handed to can use the transfer station.
Well, that's why, I just want clarification.
Just like my daughter drives my truck to the dump, could have a sticker on it.
Well, I understand, and she can, that woman can pass it out to whoever she wants. My concern is, how do we know we're giving it to the person that owns the house or rents the house?
The person who comes to get the tag.
But most of them aren't going to come, because they don't have a car, and maybe they don't come in.
And they don't get one.
Well, I'm just trying to get clarification how we're supposed to handle it.
Someone who...
With the exception of elderly people who are non-ambulatory, we would expect them to come in themselves. I mean, I can think of one person that you know as well as I do, Nancy, who's actually going to be probably the first person getting one of these. She's non-ambulatory, she could not get into this Town Hall if she needed to at the moment. Her trash, which is minimal, at the moment, may be picked up by one of two sons or one of three grandsons. They all stop in regularly, and it's not uncommon for them to go, yeah, Jim, could you stop by and pick up her trash?
I know certain people, and the one you're talking about, it's the ones I don't know, that I need clarification.
And if that happens for somebody else, if it's somebody, Sergeant Wood actually supplies their own trash pickup, if it is somebody else, then we handle it on a case-by-case basis. Yeah, Mrs. Smith, you just bought a house in Newton, you have no vehicle, you're 93 years old, okay, if you send your son in, you know, we will allow them to get your permit for you.
Or we will mail it to your address.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to sound like a broken record, but this goes back to what I just said eight minutes ago. We have stakeholders here who weren't, didn't have the opportunity to review and provide input before this meeting.
Which stakeholders are you...
Can I finish?
Yep.
So if they had been able to do that, then you guys, as the Policy Committee, could have written this in such a way that we wouldn't have...
I'm sorry, that's BS. There are no other stakeholders.
We have people that have to hand out the permits, that's what we're talking about.
They're a stakeholder.
They need to know how and when to do it.
This is a policy they have to follow.
This policy has been out there for over two weeks, and we have had no response from anybody.
Right.
So don't tell me that...
Jim, relax, please.
Jim, I didn't give you any response, because I didn't have any response, because in my world, this is fine to me. But I think Nancy and Diane are the implementers of the policy, and they really should have the opportunity to give input. So when the Board of Selectmen, who's going to vote on it, we see the final product, and we don't have to spend all this time discussing changes in the meeting.
They also had these changes.
Okay, I don't think it's going to hurt if we hold off to the next meeting with the other policy, and Nancy and Diane can discuss it with you guys and just work out the way it's going to, figure out how it's going to work, and then we can all vote on it.
Those were my concerns, because I just didn't, I want to make sure we're doing it right and we're being fair with everybody, that's all.
The only other thing I would add, too, in my sense, is they're probably not a stakeholder, but did the transfer station look at the, will this affect their implementation of it at all? I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
And I just want to throw one other thing out there. There is a difference between policy and procedure.
True.
Okay, we're talking policy here.
Right.
Not procedures.
But some, procedures...
Procedures can change.
Procedure, true, and it's the implementation typically of a policy, so...
Exactly.
So depending on how you write a policy sometimes...
Okay, one person needs to talk at a time.
All right, I'll yield...
Matt, you were in the conversation, that's what I was saying.
Right. So the way, the way you implement a policy sometimes is, or the way the procedure outlines how you implement the policy, it's important that they match, is what I'm saying. I really think, you guys, you absolutely sent, what'd you say, two weeks ago we first got it, I think is when I saw it, this right here?
Yep.
Actually, it's been online since the beginning.
April 2nd, yep.
Okay, because whatever reason, I know I've had it for a while, because I read it a while ago. I read it, I didn't have any issues with it. You could have directed it, because you sent it to us, I forget how we got it, but anyway, we knew we had to read it, right, as a Board? You could do the same thing and direct it to stakeholders, and as, you know, a month ago, I presented an option. Nobody went for it, but, you know...
Oh, I know, there was added a layer of bureaucracy that would be...
Yeah, Jim, I don't think it's bureaucracy as much as it's transparency, so, but I'll stop.
All right, like I said, it's not going to hurt to let it go another two weeks, so Nancy can discuss it with you, with Lisa or you, and it wouldn't hurt for the transfer station to take a look at it and see if they'd have any issues with it, and then we vote on it in two weeks.
And I do agree that implementation of the policy will need to be addressed, both with the transfer station and with the Selectmen's Office where they hand out the tags, and I do agree, but it is implementation. So once the policy is established, then it's like, okay, this is what we have, this is how, and work with the transfer station on devising an implementation plan for them, work with the Selectmen's Office to devise the procedures for them. Because procedures can change, and you do not want to build procedures into a policy.
Right, but they may have some input that may alter the policy as it's written, that's all I'm asking.
Which is possible.
Alter the implementation, is what I said earlier. I think we're, I think we've said all...
Right, I think it needs to be voted on next Selectment's meeting. Okay, any announcements?
Can we go back?
What's that matrix thing?
Can we go back to the security team at the very beginning? We passed over that.
Which one?
Fire alarm contract.
Fire alarm.
Fire alarm, yes.
Okay, I saw that in the new fire station, all right. The fire alarm monitoring contract.
Now, that, I believe they did the testing at the new fire station, and according, because I really didn't know anything about it, and Chief came in, Chief Alcaldino came in asking me to sign these documents, and I said, I think it's the Selectmen or the Chairman that needs to sign. So I called and spoke to them to get the scoop as to, you know, how much it was, to, you know, is it included in the bond money or in the fire department budget? I didn't know. But she said that it's $552 per year for the monitoring at the new station, and it started on 5/8. That's the day they tested everything, so I just wanted to make sure the Board knew and that the Chairman, I guess, can sign it. I didn't know anything about it, I didn't feel comfortable signing it, so...
Well, it is a service agreement.
Yeah, and I didn't know if it was a continuance from the old station to the new station, I just didn't have any information, so I was...
Well, because we are the guy that uses here, don't we?
Down there.
The old station.
Yep.
This is all new.
So this is for the fire department, right?
Yeah.
We need the fire chief here to explain it to us.
It's just a monitor, the fire system.
It's already in place.
You need somebody.
They just need somebody, the Chairman, to sign.
Right, but I mean, like, you have questions quite clearly with this.
Well, I did then, you know, Chief didn't feel comfortable signing it, and he asked me to, and I said...
Well, he doesn't sign contracts.
Yeah, no, it would be the Chairman or the Board.
So that's the only reason I put it on here, so that you're all aware. I just want to make sure you're all aware.
$552 a year is about right, it's like, what, 40-something a month?
And everything's already hooked up, so it's a given, anyway, but...
Well, my question is, is this an additional fee for the new fire station, or are we changing it from the old one to the new one?
No, I think we'll probably end up canceling the one that's down there, because they have the, it's not probably as good as this one is.
I don't know what they pay now.
All right, I just don't want to be paying for the old fire station when we're not using it.
I mean, it runs year to year, so if it runs through the year, we won't renew the old station for next year.
I was kind of hoping we'd get a credit.
I don't know if they'll do that, but my understanding is, once they take the phones out of the old station, the system doesn't work, anyway.
Right.
Okay.
So this is a new contract?
For the new station, yeah. This is all part of the wiring and stuff that went in.
Wouldn't this go into effect when the new station opens?
It already started on May 8th, because that's when they tested everything to make sure it works.
It's live.
So it'll go May to May.
And will we be getting a credit for the old, when the old station is taken off home?
We don't know that yet.
I don't know, I can ask, I don't know.
So can we hold off on this until we get that info?
Is it going to make a difference?
Yeah, this is already in place.
It's not going to make a difference, so...
And I'll see, we'll try and get a credit back on the other one, but we don't know yet when they're going to move all that stuff out, so we may be toward the end of the year, it'll expire, anyway.
You're talking like 200, 300 bucks.
Yeah, it's not much.
Because I doubt if he's charging us 52, 50 bucks a month down there. It only got one line. It doesn't even have a horn.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I would. I'll make a motion to accept the fire alarm monitoring contract from Security Team, but the actual monitoring company is going to be central alarm monitoring.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just Chairman signing.
I just, you're authorizing the Chairman to sign?
Yeah.
You're authorizing the Chairman to sign, it's a one-year contract?
I believe it is, but...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
I'll be abstaining until I get the answer of a question.
What question is that, if we get a credit?
Well, if not, we will be receiving credit for the other...
But it doesn't have any effect on the contract.
It's a different company.
It has no bearing on this particular...
It's a new station, but we will try.
In favor?
We will try.
Okay, unanimous.
We go downstairs, I'll tell you who the other company is that it is, because it's on your panel downstairs.
Okay. What's the 2018 matrix?
Yeah, that is updated through today, so I, usually every year, I get the Board to do it somewhere between April 1st and May, with all the correct updated pay scales. So it's just to keep us on a clear slate each year, and, you know, because we make many changes throughout the year.
Okay. My computer's frozen here, so... Okay. My computer's frozen here, so, here it goes, maybe, nope.
No, you had it. Let me go back to Alt+Tab. It, it's actually thinking.
It's been doing that for an hour now.
So we have, and I scrolled down to this because this is the only one I really know, is the selectmen. It says 291, 80, or 67.
For a month.
Quarterly.
It should be monthly.
Yeah.
Monthly.
We used to do quarterly, right? So that is that now?
Yeah, I would just...
I can fix that.
Just so the folks at home know, we don't make a lot, but we don't make that little.
Right, you all set now?
Yeah, it used to be quarterly that you got paid and then it changed to monthly.
Yeah.
So I missed that.
I tried opening up the transfer station thing and it spun for 20 minutes.
Something you can see, just gives us wages and salaries, so.
Yeah, it's just a new update, upgrade, yeah.
Just to show us where everyone is at. So that's fine. And that's just informational? There's no voting or anything like that that needs to be taken place?
I'd just like the board to sign it so that way it's official and, you know, you're aware.
It needs to be corrected, remove the word quarterly.
Yeah, Matt just told me. I'll fix that. That was an error. I missed that one.
Jim, there is an education incentive plan at the top.
I, I, I saw that and I'm wondering...
You may be eligible?
Quite honestly, those numbers, since your bachelor's degree is never going to disappear, I don't, I understand that there are two numbers for the hour rate.
What it does, the first number is for the grade and step. And if they have a 5% merit, I'm sorry, EIP, then it goes up 5% on that rate. But the grade stays the same.
Okay.
If it's 2.5%, that's why the lower number is the grade and step. And then the second one is the degree. And if it's bolded, that's the one they're getting paid per hour.
Okay. Everybody all set with the...
You might want to add the EOC staff that's not in there.
Yeah, it is. It's on the, next to the last page. It's on page four. See it?
Hey Nancy?
Yes.
Is this automobile liability insurance minimum, is this a duplicate of information in another place? Another form? Isn't it on the waiver or something?
I don't think so. I think this is what the board votes for. Primex gives us a rate each year and tells us what the, you know, the cost is, the percentage. So Primex is new. We had New Hampshire, a health, what is it, local government center on the last one.
I just remember the board voting on something, I want to say last year, that the bookkeeper had brought to us for some...
The bookkeeper updated this for me.
It may have been, I, I'll have to go back and see because I know we, I just want to make sure it's not a duplication of the same information in two different places.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? If it is in another place, then we need to decide which place is the right place for it to be. That's all.
Okay. Because I know with the Plow people, we had, we do a certain rate for if the prices go up or down.
And, and I'm aware of that as well.
Okay.
I, I'm just thinking that it's on another form or document somewhere. And that's why I want to just double check before we go ahead.
Sure.
I don't like duplication because if you update it in one place and not in another...
I've only, we've only done it on this. I'm not familiar with any place else, but if there is someplace else, we'll make sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we don't need to vote on this, right? We just need to...
No, just sign it. That makes it official.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that we should hold off on, well...
Well, we can hold off until we find out if it's duplicated or not.
And to remove the quarterly from the doc as well. But definitely to find out whether or not that information is in another place.
So if we have all the information, we can sign off on it at the next meeting.
Right.
Okay.
All right, correspondence letter from the Sanborn Regional High School Music Department.
So as part of planning the Memorial Day Parade, I got correspondence from Sanborn High School and the band director. And basically, he, he did apologize and he said it pains him to do this, but he's given both our town and Kingston notice that due to the frequent lack of participation in the band on Memorial Day, meaning certain families go away for the weekend. He can't, in good conscience, expect the band to play in our parade because he, he can't put together a show, right, the way he would like to with, I think he, he estimates about 20% of the band would not be able to participate. So I, I told them we were disappointed to hear, but we kind of understand it's a hard decision for him. You know, it's something he looks forward to. So I just wanted the, the board to be aware of that, that we will not have the band, nor will Kingston have the band in the parade this year. It's unfortunate, but it's kind of the way things are, so.
Okay. Unfortunate. Okay.
Well, excuse me, there's one more thing. The warrant was printed tonight by the assessor. So I'm asking that the board sign the warrant. It's not on the agenda because I didn't know she was coming in to print it, but she knew you were meeting tonight. So she wanted to get that finished so Mary Jo can start printing the bills.
Okay.
We're talking about the real estate bills, correct?
Yes. Yep. So there's two sets in there, one for us and one for Mary Jo. And I'm just asking that the board vote or whatever it is you do to sign those.
And somebody want to motion to sign the new bill?
Are they in here, Nancy?
Yep. They're probably down the bottom in the red one.
Okay, so I would move to sign the tax collector's warrant, authorizing collecting property taxes in the amount of $6,719,334.
An interest of 12% per annum from July 13, 2018 thereafter.
Well, I wasn't going to read the whole thing. I just wanted my motion to be the dollar amount and what it was.
And that's for the first half of the year taxes.
Okay, Matt seconded it. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll sign all manifest tax credit and requisitions.
The only other thing is the letters in there.
Yeah, there should be.
So, so there's a letter in there we'd like to get the chairman to sign. Some of our parade volunteers are going to go and talk to local businesses, invite them to participate however they deem appropriate in the parade. So we wanted a letter signed by the chair just to kind of give the details and we'd fill in the blank of what the business is, so.
Okay.
I don't know if I even need a motion for that, but if the chair doesn't mind signing.
I don't mind. I'll sign them. Any other announcements?
I'll make a motion to sign the vendor manifest dated 5/15/2018 in the amount of $86,346.15.
A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to sign the fire resting manifested 5/15/2018 in the amount of $2,256.56.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to sign the payroll manifest in the amount of $42,698.98 for pay period 4/29/18 through May 12, 2018 with a pay date of 5/17/18.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to sign a denial of a veteran's tax credit for MAP 17-4-6 because it does not meet the criteria.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I move to sign requisition 2567 for rec. commission in the amount of $94.94 for American flags and assorted wrapped candy to be handed out at the Memorial Day Parade.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to sign requisition...
Hold on. Was that...
It's okay.
You had four in favor. I'm sorry, I don't believe in handing out candy in Memorial Day.
Okay, four in favor, one opposed.
I got you.
So I moved to sign requisition 2566 for rec. commission in the amount of $161.19 for printing Memorial Day pamphlets.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's all.
You guys send them back when you're done.
Yep.
This is you only.
Okay, if there's no other business, I'm going to...
Move to adjourn.
At 8:52 PM. All in favor? Go call vote.
Actually, before we...
Oh, hold on.
Do this because this will be the last one. The Memorial Day Parade is May 28, Monday of Memorial Day. 10:00 AM step off at the central fire station. So the, as we're now calling it, the old fire station, going to head north up 108, make the left onto Highland, follow Highland onto Woodyer to the Willow Grove Cemetery. Weather permitting, we'll do the parade. No matter what the weather is, we will do some sort of honor ceremony, so people should keep an eye on the website if there's a question of weather, but that's all I have.
Who's he sending water for? Air who?
Okay, any other announcements? Okay, so adjourn at 8:53 PM.